Okay, we will call the meeting to order. It is 7:01. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. More coffee.
All right, Sue.
Here.
Trudy.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
John.
Here.
Laura. Here. We have a board.
Very good. Board member conflict of interest statement. Public comment on agenda items. If you have a public comment, take the podium. No public comment on agenda items? We'll let Kim get her seat. You have a minute. Public comment period is closed. Approval of meeting agenda. I think we have changes. Okay, we have one. Laura?
I need to add discussion on plant.
So that's new business?
Yes.
Jay?
And I have, in addition, the item K under new business. It's a USDA waterway grant opportunity that closes next week coming through Sheboygan County. And I'd also like to add item L, new business. It's regarding my communicating with the road commission on doing an engineering study for a crosswalk on Barbara. Any other changes? Okay, so approval of meeting agenda has changed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have support?
Support.
Who made the motion?
Sue. Sue.
Sorry, it's on. And was that Laura who said support?
Laura, did you support? Yes. Okay. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of previous minutes from the June 25th special board meeting. The only question I had, it's not a correction, it's just a question. On page two, under budget appropriate, excuse me, Budget Appropriations Act, read, in parentheses, it says, "See document at end of minutes." I presume that will be posted? Okay. All right. All right. That was my only question. Any changes to those meeting minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the previous, the June 25th, 2025 special board meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve those minutes.
Good support? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Reports, sewer updates. Steve Corporon. Always appreciate you hanging around. This is a long day for you.
Good evening, Steve Corporon, Performance Engineers.
Push your button, please. Oh, sorry.
I'll just lean down a little bit. For those that just sat for the sewer meeting, this is the ultra condensed version of that. So, update, the plant, plumbing is going into all the tanks now that they passed all their leak testing. Blower number one is up and operational. The new blower number two is in place, is not been hooked up yet, they're working on that. If all goes well, we're looking at probably about a month from now, maybe middle of next month, for the new half of the plant to come online. But we'll know more in the next week or two if that's going to hold. Matt's underground, who's been working mostly north of the bridge, plus on Martin Island over here. They're essentially done in the beach club, except for the actual hookups for people. The restoration work's been done, the paving's been done. They just finished on Martin Island today, getting the last two curb stops in, and they have the two cleanouts for the two ends of the lines over there. They're going to start on South Prospect, up near the entrance to the beach club, and work their way towards the intersection of Chippewa Beach and Prospect itself, over the next two weeks, getting all of those curb stops in and service lines drilled. And that work will be done for them. Their two lift stations have power. They have not been hooked up yet, though. Their electrician's been waiting on a couple, some capacitors which came in last week and two floats which should be in this week. And so either later this week or next week, they should be hooking, finishing the wiring in those, so we can start testing those and see if we can bring them online. Once those are online, then basically everybody north of the bridge will be ready to hook up if they need to. I don't know when that's going to be yet, but we can't just bring on a whole bunch of people all at once until the plant's ready. But if there's a few people that are in kind of a real extremist type case, we could probably let some people start coming on as soon as those lift stations are operational. And they still have some restoration work to do as well, including over by the bridge on the highway. I just noticed today they need to get that, where they had dug up there, where they tied in, the line they drilled under the river, over to the connection to the existing system, that has not been graded and reseeded yet. It looks green, but it's a bunch of weeds, so that needs to get taken care of. Elmer's has been off-site for several weeks now. They're waiting for their three lift stations to get power from consumers. Right now, it looks like that's probably going to happen next week, if all goes well. I know that since Elmer's has scheduled a power outage in that area by Devo Beach for next Sunday morning, so we're hoping that's for a new transformer that's going to help power that Devo Beach lift station. So once those three lift stations are up with power, we'll be able to start testing those as well, and we can start bringing on the rest of these one people. Most of the restoration work's done, they're going to fine tune some stuff when they come back, but they're not going to really be back on site until they get those lift stations powered up, so they can start restoring the area around those and cleaning things up a little bit. Phase two, I've been hitting hot and heavy last week and this week, because the contractor has given us his updated schedule. He plans to mobilize. I don't think that's me.
I don't think it's me.
I'm not touching anything.
There.
Well, now it's off.
Yeah, talk loud. Talk loud. You're fine.
You sure?
Yeah. You're fine.
Okay. They're going to start mobilizing all their stuff to the site the week of August 18th. So it's going to be after the boat races, so we get that by us as well. And then start actual construction the week of August 25th. They're going to start down at the intersection of Barbara, Doris, and Dorothy to dig in that lift station, and they will pulverize Barbara and Dorothy, and then they'll dig in the pipe on Barbara, dig in the pipe on Dorothy. That's probably going to take them several weeks. We'll have a better feel for how much, how much they're going to make each day in general after that first week or two. The plan is then to shift over, the next two streets would be Doris and Birchfield. Those four streets right there, all that stuff goes from that lift station up to the new system at the end of Birchfield. So there's a chance they could come on later this year, we don't know yet. Then the next two streets after that would be South and Holden, and then the final street would be Mac. They might get it all done before winter shutdown, we don't know right now. They have said they are not going to start the low-pressure sewer system out for the rest of Barbara and Sturgeon Island until next spring. There is a good chance that they'll still be doing some gravity work next spring as well. It all depends on how the weather goes and how their crew works this fall. I've been going door to door last week and this week on Barbara, Doris, Dorothy, Birchfield, and making a few side visits to some of the other streets, trying to get people while they're here, while there's a lot of people here, to figure out, so we can get the lateral location for their connection at the spot that works best for them. So we're out in front of the game a little more than we were in phase one, which is good. But if anybody has not heard from me yet, especially in those three or four streets, give me a call, the information's on the website, they've got the information here at the office. And then I'll keep working my way north, but I'm trying to concentrate on those four streets down there right now, before I hit up heavy on South and Holden and Mac. So, but that was a big dump on you there. Questions? I have no change orders for you tonight, just the pay requests. Good news this week, the EPA, Trudy and Chris were finally able to get into the portal and get everything submitted, everything's been approved, so you guys are all caught up on your EPA-funded portions of the last four, five pay requests. So Grand Travis Construction, who's doing the plant work, who's the big beneficiary of that getting caught up today, they got a bunch of checks today.
Yeah. We appreciate their patience. They went over, above, over and above.
So, and I will tell you, in our meetings with the phase two contractor the last two weeks, they were nervous, because two-thirds of their money is, each pay request is basically from the EPA grant.
Yeah.
So they were not, I don't think he was threatening not to start, but I think he was thinking it.
Yeah, and I don't blame him.
Not at all.
Nope, not at all.
So, no, but he was greatly relieved when I told him that we got this resolved finally. So good.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yep. I don't think there's anything in the sewer bills, they're just standard work to date, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any questions?
You said spring for Barbara, that means beginning the work on Barbara.
For the low-pressure, yeah, they will not, they are not planning to start the low-pressure contract, which is, once you pass the intersection of Doris and Dorothy and Barbara, I think we pick up one house on each side on the gravity section coming back, but everybody else, they're out around the Barbara Spit and then out to Sturgeon, that's all a low-pressure sewer system with the grinder pumps and all that. They are not going to start that work till next spring. Both these contracts, they have until the end of August next year to complete, so.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm heading home.
Good for you. Thanks for hanging around, Steve.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. O'Henley, Dan O'Henley from Sheboygan County Recycling. Welcome.
Welcome, me, I do my voice. Thank you for meeting with me tonight and trying to discuss some issues that we're having down here. And I brought some reports tonight to hand out, if anybody's interested in the program and what it costs, what we take in mostly is cardboard and stuff like that. So I think we want to start right off by talking about the camera system, or what, how do you want to do this?
Well, why don't you give us an update of, you and I had a conversation a week, two weeks ago, about what we're seeing at the drop station, and how many drop stations do you have in Sheboygan County?
Okay.
And what are you, what are we all experiencing?
Okay, so current sites in Sheboygan County right now is Sheboygan, Aloha, Indian River, and Walker Township and Waverly Township all have open sites. West Burke, East Burke have transfer station hours. So we have several sites. Indian River, Sheboygan, and Aloha are probably, are our biggest sites. Indian River and Aloha, they're probably all the same for the same problems. The difference is we have more help at, let's say, at Sheboygan County, because we have the jail there.
Oh, sure.
So we can have trustee go out and clean that up. Bang, done. Aloha, luckily we have a volunteer that helps out over there, helps me keep that clean. Indian River, we do have a guy there that collects bottles, stuff, he's tremendous help. Whoever takes the bottles there and stuff, they usually help clean up too, so that's a plus. What we're having is people dropping things off that they shouldn't. I mean, it's clearly stated on the containers what we take.
Yes.
That's it. That's the only thing that should go in there. And that's a bad problem, because what's happening is it's driving cost of recycling up by 50%, because they're putting so much trash or unwanted or stuff that we can't recycle.
Right.
So we haul it over there. Sure, it's gone, it's not a problem, but when we dump over there, we weigh. So if we're weighing heavy, we know why, it's, we're, you know, that's, so that's a problem. I didn't want to put cameras up. I don't want, I'm old school. I want people to do what we're supposed to, and I want to use this program to make it better for all of us. I mean, it's $25 a year per household to get rid of your recycling. That's 80-plus percent of your household waste goes there, if you just did it right, you know? So I don't believe we're going to get to those people, or whoever, whatever the reason is, I don't know who it is, and, you know, none of us are perfect.
Right.
Me neither. So the problem is, now they just throw it on the ground. And like, I just was over there a while ago, and there's, a lot of the stuff on the ground, there's bags of plastic tin and glass. Like, it's getting full, it is, but it would have fit in there. I picked a big bag up, and put the whole bag in there.
Right.
Wasn't even any effort.
Yeah.
So I don't know what to do. I think we're at cameras, personally.
Well, you and I talked about signage. What signage do we have there? Would it help to have more?
So I have signs that are on plastic, like a sawhorse deal, it's a big sign, three by, two by three, whatever they are, tells you not to put stuff on the ground, not, dah dah dah. They throw them on the ground or put them out back, so they don't have to look at them. So them don't work. So I don't know what, I don't believe signage is going to work.
Okay.
I think that we need to put cameras up at our cost, Sheboygan County Recycling. If there's anything that the township could help us with, whether it be in the internet or however we could make this work. If I put up a hunting-type camera, the pictures will come right to my phone. There creates another problem. I don't mind getting the pictures to my phone, but what do we do then?
Yeah.
Do we call the police? I'm pretty sure the police are busy enough. This is not something that I would want tax dollars spent on policing. I've had it, had to have them do something before, but really, there's not a law other than a litter law, and that's like a hundred bucks, and would they pay it? It's not going to vote court, you know what I mean? You're going to have, my time here, everybody's time is just not, that's, I don't think that's the answer.
Right.
And I don't want to call the police on every person. Hey, and if somebody can't get rid of a mattress, that's not the place for it, but I guess it's, if they needed help.
Maybe alternative numbers, you know, call PACC, they'll come pick it up, break your house.
Yeah, something.
For like $25.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't think that's going to reach what the problem is, you know, and I'm trying to be very positive here.
Right.
I started this program in 2007. I know I'm a little long in the tooth here, and I'm getting a little bit frustrated, so I'm glad that we're talking.
Yeah. Well, again, I wanted you to come and just give a report of what you're seeing, because you have more than one station. Maybe it's worth further conversation. I've had a conversation with other people who work at the Emmett County, and they have similar situations. I don't think we're unique.
Oh, they have it worse.
Yeah.
Emmett County, this week, on Thursday, they had easily, easily a dump truck full of cardboard at one of the locations. And what they're doing is, when they pull in, and if the site's full, or getting full, they start throwing it in piles, well then the driver can't get to the containers to haul them. I mean, it's just, you know.
Yeah. Well.
So, whatever happened, if it's full, just come back in an hour or come back tomorrow, you know?
Right.
I check those sites every day. Saturday, Sunday, I get up, have a cup of coffee, and I drive, I live 10 miles from here, I drive out here and check it, make sure, open them up, or I'll say, well, that'll make tomorrow morning. Sometimes it's tough, you got to push the stuff in, but I'm not hauling cans that aren't full.
Right, right.
It's too much, you know, it's a lot of money here.
Right, yeah. Well, let's keep talking about this, and I'm with you. How do you legislate good behavior? I don't know. I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, we've had volunteers, I don't know, we police each other, maybe, we could reach out to the community and say, you know, don't be afraid to speak up.
Right, right.
I don't know. I don't know if we can hook up to your internet over there.
We can check into that, you know, there might be.
I buy whatever, or I'll pay for the internet, or, you know.
Right, yeah. Well, there's some, there's some commercial businesses over there, and I can have a conversation with them, and we can throw some ideas around here. We have some really, some very knowledgeable people with regard to technology. We'll loop Gordon in on this and see.
Yeah, Mo.DOT Furniture would let me use their internet. I would put cameras right on their building, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Then can we put a picture out of the guy doing it? That's the next thing, we got to make sure.
Right, so we'll have to, we'll have to get with some legal on that.
We did have a gentleman stop in today. He was at the recycling, and there was this truck that had, it was a builder from Birmingham on this truck, and he was dropping off headboards. The citizen had told him, nope, pick those back up, put them in your truck.
Oh, good, good for them.
Yeah.
But we expect them to come back.
Oh, yeah, he'll come back tonight, or, yeah, we have, we have people putting in truckloads of vinyl siding in there.
Oh, gee.
I mean, and that clearly is not recyclable.
And there's no need for that, because when you purchase it, you can take it back. We took our old back to the company that we bought our new from. They take it.
Yeah.
Well, we'll keep working at this. There has to be a solution. We'll start small, yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Do you have a phone number on the dumps, on the containers to say, if full, please call?
Nope. Don't need it. I check, I check them every day. If I don't check them every day, Roger does. There's no time that you can't get more in them if you just push it in. So, yep. They, people get ahold of me, you know? So, yep. We did have SAPA, Straight Theory Troubled Kids Program.
Oh, yes.
They were cleaning for me every year. Well, this year, the county didn't get the grant for that.
Oh.
I just found that out. So I have been off on light duty with a shoulder injury, so we're going to try to get that cleaned up this week and weed-whipped, but other than that, we're going to just do what we can as usual, and, you know.
All right, we'll put our heads together, we'll see what we can do.
I'm more than happy to come to any meetings, or call me, or whatever.
Okay, great. And you dropped off the current guide, and you said there's a new one being made, and we'll have those available here.
Yep.
You can get us some?
Yes, as soon as Rose, my secretary, gets them, she will get them out.
Perfect.
And the other one is just this year's report.
Yeah.
And it'll show you some charts on the back that really show you the product and the amount of product.
Wow.
That we're hauling, so.
Oh, well, I guess the good thing is, we are recycling more.
Well, the mixed fiber, which is cardboard and corrugated cardboard, that is just huge, you know, because everybody gets everything delivered at home.
Yeah.
I mean, I come home every day, and there are three boxes at my door, and my wife told me that's not going to stop. So, it's only going to get worse.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's always a pearl in everything, and.
Absolutely.
You know, we are recycling more, let's, we can start.
There's more trouble in the world than this.
Right.
But if we just work together, I think, and talk to each other, and.
Yeah. And hold each other accountable, like this person.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. We can be politely.
Great, yep.
Great.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody got more questions? Perfect.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, bills.
All right. See you later, Mr. O'Henley.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had 29 invoices in the amount.
Can we have our mics whacked?
Oh.
29 invoices in the amount of $43,577.69.
Just out of curiosity, does that include? That does not include payroll. That's a separate report. Oh, yeah, there it is. All right, any questions? Form in here? Do we, any questions on the bills? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to accept those? Trudy, Chris?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, treasurer's report.
Okay, well, one weekend to collecting summer taxes, lots of confused people about what happened to their bill, and if you have friends that talk to you, your, I mean, your tax bill may have went up because your assessment went up, but as far as, we're now collecting, and we talked about this at a couple meetings, but In the Lakes wanted to collect half in the summer, half in the winter. So I've been telling people, whatever your bill went up in the summer, it will go down roughly the same amount. So they're just trying to get their money coming in across the board. It is up on our website, the letter from the superintendent, and then I tried to put it on the tax bills, and it starts to say, "In the Lakes Board," and then it cut it off, so I don't know what happened with that, but something on my end, I'm sure when I proved it, I didn't make sure it was all in there. Other than that, I think we've reseeded in today, one week later, and I think we're already up to like $90,000. So people are coming in and paying. Then the only other thing that we're really working hard on is getting all of our bank recs done, and of all the banks we have that I've talked to you about before, 17 of them, we only have the pool account, of course, and then the new account that we opened up for the EPA funds, that's just, that'll just take a second to get that one done, and then the sewer ones, the one sewer account is because some of the changes to pool affected sewer, so I can probably get that done next week. Other than that, everything else is up to date, all the other accounts. Some of them through June, we've already got the June 31st reconciled. I got to get the ones from the library, and those are quick. And then, so we are looking really good as far as getting them done, getting them caught up, and keeping them up to date, so.
Lori, isn't this, is this the first tax with the new voted mileage for the school?
Is it? Or was it on the winter bills too?
Winter bills.
Oh.
Was it on the winter bills? Okay.
I thought it was on winter bills.
So, okay, sorry.
That's all right.
I thought maybe they would be seeing an increase, but they saw it less.
Yeah, and they have it, it's separated on the bill as far as your, the 18 mil, and then that debt is a separate line, so.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's report? Please.
Don't move.
Support?
I'll support that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And DDA, Dan is not here, Sue, do you want to just?
Just a continuation, and I noticed we are sending out a letter to those businesses south of 68, down to the Tuscula border, about possibility of creating a pathway from the school to the township line. So we're going to get that letter out. Other than that, pathway's done, or, excuse me, streetscape is done.
The waypoint signs have been starting to go up today.
I saw that, I saw that, yeah, yeah. But, yeah. Everything's good, yeah.
Okay, FOIA, we've had one FOIA request. Library, no report there. Parks?
Hello, my name is Stacy Cole, and I am the chair of the Parks Commission. The Parks Commission would like to provide the township board with an update on staffing, site activity, and ongoing observations at our public facilities. We are currently seeking to fill two open positions, one full-time and one seasonal. The seasonal position runs from April through September, starting at $16.50 per hour, and includes general custodial and lawn maintenance duties as directed by the supervisor, the maintenance supervisor. The full-time position pays $18 per hour and involves general maintenance and custodial responsibilities, including snow removal. This role may also require weekend and holiday availability as needed. Um, during the recent holiday weekend, volunteer video footage from the Green Docks area was reviewed. The site experienced high visitor traffic, but no safety issues were observed. Both boaters and swimmers at the Green Docks were respectful and orderly. We extend our thanks to Pat and Jane McGinnis for generously providing their time and equipment to assist in reviewing and responding to earlier concerns at this location. Since the removal of the Portage John at the Green Dock site, we have actually seen a reduction in reported issues. While there was some initial concern from the public about the lack of restroom facilities, the overall impact has been positive, resulting in less maintenance and fewer incidents of misuse. Um, at our meeting on July first, we had received one bid of five hundred dollars for the truck and we received two bids for the trailer. Um, that was five hundred dollars for the truck and that was passed at our meeting. And the highest bid for the trailer was six hundred dollars, which was passed to accept and they are both gone. Additionally, the Parks Commission has voted not to charge rental fees for the remainder of this year to the following community organizations. The Burt Lake Preservation Association, the Women's Club, the Indian River Area Library, and the Friends of Inland Lakes Schools. Looking ahead, we are discussing the creation of a once-per-year application process that would allow similar groups to request a waiver of rental fees in the future. We appreciate the Board's continued support and are committed to keeping our parks clean, safe, and accessible for all community members.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nobody asked me to step up to be the Chair.
Brian, wave your hand. We have a, a new Parks Commissioner also here. Um, and there is one more position open on the Parks Commission, if anyone's interested. Um, any questions or comments on the Parks Commission report?
I just want to thank Jane and Pat again for, um, their time.
Yes.
On recording and volunteering their equipment. I appreciate that.
Yeah, you know, I, I had a conversation with a, um, a representative from District Health Four last week who was here to test the beach, the waters at the beach. We did, we are tested every Monday. Um, we had a high reading. It's either coliform from waterfall excrement, poop, or E. coli. It was, there was no E. coli found. There was a high reading on Monday last week. Routinely when that happens, it is tested the very next day by this young man from District Health Four. He did test it. He said it had dropped. No need to put out any kind of, um, uh, a caution. He, he, he even went on to explain the, uh, he said it is always an individual's choice to swim. Um, it's always their choice to swim in the shallows or the deep or whatever. And sadly, um, two of our, um, northern Michigan community members lost their life swimming at Maple Bay. So, uh, again, we just urge people to use their own discretion and caution when they are swimming and enjoying the waterways. Whether you're at the Green Docks, the river, any of the lakes, um, accidents happen very quickly. Uh, but he did partake of swimming at the Green Dock that Tuesday evening after he tested. And I asked him point blank, I said, how were you treated and how was the behavior? He said, and I said, and what was the garbage, garbage situation like down there? And he said, on all three counts, everything was positive. He said there was no garbage on the ground. He said there was no disrespect shown to him, there was no foul language. And he said everyone looked to be having a very good time. So, that was a nice report as well. Okay, thank you. Gordon's not here, so his report is in the packet. But they had a while moving, oh, that's from June. Okay, on to old business, boat launch parking lot restriping. That went out to bid. Um, I, I did not hit the, um, the targets that we had set up last month, so it'll run through the end of the month. We've got it posted on the socials on our website. You'll, you'll notice on the website Karen has done a marvelous job tweaking things. There is a, um, and if you're looking at the website page, in the lower left, I think the second bullet point down, it says bid opportunities. It's there. Um, she's working really hard to bring those things to the forefront, as well as out at Builders Exchange. Uh, we'll run that through the end of the month and go from there with it. So, that's where the restriping is at, boat launch. Capital Improvement Plan clarification, that is, I suggest we table that. We have not heard back from legal. Do we need to make a motion on that or can we just table it, you know? Let's just table it, we'll just table it till next month. Same thing with the corrective quitclaim deed. Um, that was with the library and the, the question last month wasn't whether or not the library owned their part of the building and the property upon which it sits. But where is the township in all of this? So, we're still sorting through that and there are people with a lot of history that we need to reach out to on that and we'll make a connection on that. Um, Parks Commission addressed the bids on the truck and the trailer. It's nice to have them out of the parking lot. Um, the culvert on Club Road, if you recall last month, we brought to the meeting a request to put in, to replace a culvert over off Club Road south, south of M sixty-eight where Big B Coffee and Dan's Repair is. The Road Commission has purchased that culvert. Big B Coffee and Dan's Service have agreed to pay. We set the stipulations that the checks came and cleared, were brought to us and cleared. Um, there was some balk, balking at that. Um, so the Road Commission went out and talked to other commissions, Road Commissions, that said, hey, how to handle this, and they came up with this agreement. Um, it does completely take the township out, out of this agreement financially. We are the go-between, we are the conduit for the money. It allows those businesses to make a donation to the township for tax purposes. We then, it's a flow-through to the Road Commission. I've received feedback from both parties. Um, Mr. Konzak at Alpina for Big B Coffee and Dan Nybel of Dan's Auto Repair. They felt the agreement was fine, in their opinion, so. I'll bring it back to the Board to ask permission and approval to sign this agreement and let both parties know, or, well, so that's a motion on the table. Uh, do we have support for the discussion of this agreement with the Road Commission?
Support.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Who wants to support?
Sue. Put Lori for second. So, any, I hope you've had a chance to read through it, the agreement. It's pretty straightforward.
So, we're being taken out of it financially, just the vote?
Correct. And I, you know, I, the only thing that, after reading it through, if you look at the paragraph under item D, the second sentence, "The cost of the culvert can be paid for by the aforementioned businesses after this document is executed and in advance of the project." This is the part that I'm questioning. "Or shall be paid within thirty days following invoice submitted after completion of the work." I wanted to strike that from the "or shall be paid." Uh, but if the Board's comfortable with that, we'll leave it.
I don't see that. Where is it? Under the last D?
Under D, that next paragraph, yeah.
This one here?
This one, right there.
Okay.
I suppose it's no big deal. I mean, we signed the agreement and they don't send a check for thirty days after. The Road Commission's holding them. They've already paid for the culvert.
Right. Um, I feel very comfortable. I, I don't know Jeff, but I definitely know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and Jeff sent an email today saying he thought, he had no problems with the, with the agreement. So, um, we'll leave it as is?
Yes.
Okay. And the only thing is that Dan Nybel's last name is not on here, so we'll get that added. Okay, so motion on the table to sign the agreement and get it returned to the Road Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, sewer construction bills. Um, Phase One Gravity to Umers in the amount of six thousand six hundred fifty dollars and seventy-four cents. Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion to Grand Traverse Construction in the amount of two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred fourteen dollars, forty-three cents. And that is paid through USDA, USDA and Eagle. Excuse me, Eagle doesn't pay on that one, that's a zero. But the EPA grant does kick in on that as well. Two twenty-seven, seven fourteen point four-three. And then sewer extension Phase One Low Pressure System to Matt's Underground in the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty-six dollars, ninety-one cents. And for Phase Two Performance Engineering, Engineering Services Construction Inspection. It's twenty-seven thousand, one dollar and seventy-five cents. And do we have, um, I'll make a motion to approve for payment the Phase One, Phase Two wastewater treatment plant and performance engineering Phase Two bills as submitted. Any support for that?
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, park fees, that was addressed by our Parks Commission. They're good. I believe I can say for the Board, we fully support that.
Let's go back to transient merchant.
Oh, did I miss, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Cruise around.
That's okay. Um, after reviewing ours rates versus other communities, our rates are right in line. Um, however, I think more work needs to be done on getting an application together, um, coming up to date with guidelines on these. Um, who should be actually, um, obtaining that license? And so, I will do a little bit more work on that and get that next month.
So, there is no motion really to be made and that's just more information. So, we will.
Table.
Table it and address it in August. There, I'm sorry, I was charging right ahead there. Um, parks fees for BLPA, Women's Club, Indian River Area Library, and Friends of the Inland Lakes Schools. Parks was gracious to present that. I think we're, I can say we're in full support of that. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Security cameras at the Green Dock and recycling, again, that's been addressed tonight. Um, Green Dock seems to be taking care of itself with self-monitoring. Let's hope it continues. And the recycling center, dig into that a little more. I don't know the legality of pictures. I'm going to have to get with the Police Department on that. Okay. Uh, I, we did receive a resignation of a second Parks Commissioner that we received at June eleventh, which was the day after the June meeting. I did want to bring that to the Board's attention. Um, make a motion that we accept the resignation of Gail Hall from the Tuscaraway Township Parks Commission. Do we have support for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail, yes. Budget amendment for the boat launch.
Okay, just, um, adjustment amendment, um, in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. I need to take that from the five zero two zero zero zero, three nine zero zero zero, um, for, what is that, for wages? And put that to the five zero two seven five six seven zero two zero zero. And then the five hundred and twelve dollars for FICA, um, five zero two seven five six seven zero nine zero zero. Do that this week.
So, the total amount of seventy-two twelve is coming from three ninety and going, and then you're separating it out, right? Did I understand? Okay, good deal.
I know that we discussed that. We had discussed that and we just missed getting it on the data.
Data, data entry, yeah, okay. All right, so, do you want to make a motion on that, Ms. Clerk?
I make a motion that I make those adjustments or amendments to the budget for wages and FICA.
And that's to put them in the boat launch?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
I'll support that.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. ONM rates for metered customers. Ms. Fisher?
Okay, we kind of missed that last month. Um, they're currently at eighty-five point sixty-six, ten percent increase. Um, brings them to ninety-four dollars and twenty-three cents per REU. Um, and then there is, can't remember, I think it's twenty cents per, um, the, um, what they meter out to. So, they're, okay, so they're.
It's the twenty cents that I'm, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, their quarterly, um, ONM rate is lower because they're metered.
Right.
And then there is so much, um, per their usage and usually it's, it's minimal.
Okay.
But they have the, they have a base rate just like everybody else.
Okay. And this is billed quarterly?
Yes.
Okay, so when will this new rate, it's ninety-four twenty-three?
With this billing.
Okay.
With this billing, do you read the one for June?
Yes.
Excuse me. Okay, so, Sue, do you have a, excuse me, do you have a motion?
A motion to approve the new rate for meters to ninety-four dollars and twenty-three cents per quarter.
Is that per REU, per quarter?
Per REU.
Okay, and do we have support for that?
I'll support that.
Excuse me.
Who wants to support?
I'm sorry, Chris, I'm up here after I've been sneezing. You have any questions or comments? No?
Already discussed.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, airport insurance renewal. Uh, the airport has their own, um, general liability insurance. They submitted a renewal this year. It does carry a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. I asked Mark if he wanted to do a little legwork and he said, sure. So, he got a second, well, let me, he got a second quote, same company, same coverage. It just changes the deductible to zero. So, with a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, it's one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. With no deductible, the premium changes to one thousand five hundred seventy-five thou, one thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars per year. Again, this is just for the airport, their general liability coverage. So, the motion, well, I guess we need to discuss it because I don't know which one we want to go.
I don't know that we've ever had a claim on that. But in nine twenty-seven years.
I was hoping we made that like.
Yeah, nine twenty-seven.
Yeah, so, it, it was just, it's something I do at home when I'm shopping my insurances, is to. So it was just, it's something I do at home when I'm shopping my insurance is, is to do this. So again, what we budgeted was for the renewal at one thousand, three twenty-five. If there is a claim, it will, the township or the airport, which is one and the same, will pay that deductible before any claims are paid. But, so the motion on the table is to accept the airport's general liability insurance coverage for general liability for one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. That's my motion. Do we have support?
We have support.
Discussion.
The difference is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
Point seven, maybe fifty dollars if there's a question.
Right.
Never say never, but-
Right.
How is the, I guess, what's the airport want to do? What was their thoughts?
They, they were willing, they were, submitted the thirteen, twenty-five.
The cheaper one?
Yeah. It's, yeah. It's the same as last year.
And we put the thirteen, twenty-five in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion is to accept the renewal for the airport's general liability coverage of one thousand, three twenty-five with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible. Motion on the table with support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh.
So-
Yeah. Sorry.
Money into me.
Money in, money out.
So we have an account at CNV, it's an IMA account, so it earns a little bit of interest. But we're done with roads for now. So that's one less bank account to reconcile every month. So it was recommended that we just close that account. And I don't have a problem closing it. I don't know if we'll ever have more road projects. I guess if we do, we'll open up another bank account. And to keep it open, when I didn't do the, I should have saw, found out if there was a charge to keep it open, there probably is, but IMA account with interest, they're probably going to have a minimum deposit. That just ties up money that's just, you know, eighteen cents interest is not.
That's about what we earn, earn on that account?
Yeah. Sometimes seven cents.
Okay. Okay, so your motion is to close the road IMA account at CNV?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have support for that?
I'll support that.
And further discussion or questions? How much work is it to open an account? Should we have a special assessment next year for a road?
No, not very much at all.
Just another vote by the board to open it.
And then go down there and sign.
Okay.
And I'll sign.
Jonathan, any comment? All in favor for closing the CNV road IMA account? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Plant Moran.
Okay. I handed out an engagement letter from Plant Moran for you to review. We've been struggling with reconciling the pool account. So our CPA, Neil Hanmawaka, has stepped away. So what I did was I reached out to Gaybridge for a recommendation for a firm who has not only municipality experience, but BSNA experience as well. And Ian Reeves from Gaybridge recommended Carrie Shea from Plant Moran, they're out of Southfield. I spoke with Carrie, she assured me that they have clients that use BSNA, and they have a lot of experience, they even help them if they come up against any burps and BSNA, whatever. Unlike the other accounts that we have, that have a handful of checks per month, we process approximately a thousand checks a month and fifteen hundred, or a year, and fifteen hundred invoices just out of the pool account alone. So we cannot start the audit until the pool account is reconciled. And the auditor, that he wants to start it mid-August. So as of today, we have five weeks to get everything ready and start getting it over to them. And anybody who knows it, it doesn't just, you don't just send one file, I mean, and they ask for stuff, and we have a list, and we check it off. So there's a lot involved. That's why the money was put in the budget for professional services, to get help with the audit.
Over the-
The reconciling the accounts, so we can be prepared for the audit. And we are stuck, we need help with this pool account. We will need to get them, get them set up with Hannibal, so they can work remote, which saves us money.
We have to give up a computer in office for them to hook up, so the, that small desk?
They won't be coming to our office.
No, but to hook up remote, they have to hook up one of ours.
We have another computer in the office that they can, that I can-
Get up and running?
Yep.
All right, well, let's get the motion on the table, and then we can have further discussion.
Okay.
I'm not done.
Okay.
Okay. Well, okay.
So that way we will get them access to general ledger, because that way they can use BSNA. The financial impact, Neil charged us a hundred and fifty dollars an hour plus mileage. With his mileage added in, it came to about a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. Plant Moran's blended fee is a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. And what blended means is that it includes some seniors consulting from them if needed. And like I said, they are CPAs, and they work with numerous municipalities.
Okay, so what is your motion?
My motion is that we get prepared to have, well, I have to say, to the engagement letter signed, get it over them, and get prepared to start getting help to get this pool account reconciled, so we're ready for the audit by mid-August.
Okay, so Laura has a motion on the table. Do we have support for that?
Yes.
Discussion.
What do you think the, what do you think the projected hourly, you know, timeframe is to get that completed? Does it take ten hours, does it take fifty hours?
Neil came here, it just depends on, I mean, we were on that last one.
Yeah. We're working with an account that had not been reconciled for two years. It is not just so much the checks that come in, it is the deposits, the general ledger journals being entered correctly. There is a lot that goes into that account. We've worked on it. I, I called Uncle a while ago. There's transactions that I can't wait to show them that need to be cleared up. I don't know how. I mean, I can do the regular reconciliations, but it was also based on the fact that the tax account hadn't been reconciled. That had to be completed before you can, because that makes changes to that pool account. It, it's a difficult account to reconcile. And should have called Uncle earlier.
So again, I'm going to piggyback on Jonathan. The audit is, they want to begin mid-August, or August 1st. Do we know? Mid-August?
Mm-hmm.
So you, how long are we anticipating engaging Plant Moran? How many weeks until the audit is started? Because we're already engaged Gaybridge for the audit itself.
Yeah, this is completely separate.
No, I understand that. I'm wondering, what's the length of our commitment with Plant Moran? A month, six weeks, eight weeks, forty hours, fifteen hours?
I don't, until the account gets reconciled.
They have to go in and look at what you-
Where, what, where is it reconciled to? What date?
It is reconciled through January, however, there's some transactions in there that were set aside to say, okay, this is set aside until we can figure out how to correct Let me put it this way. The amount of money that was spent in the past, it will be nowhere near that. It, you know, I, I, how can we say exactly how many hours? But they have money in their budget, in their-
What's, what's that budget amount? I don't remember. What's that budget amount?
Share forty thousand.
Oh.
I thought it was like eight thousand something.
Yeah, well, you've got two different, there's two-
I know, but I don't want to give up. I'm willing to still work on this for one month.
Okay, I'm sorry. It took how many months to get the tax account reconciled?
It is perfect to the penny.
Okay, yes, however, that's one account.
I understand.
And you don't have the time to have somebody who doesn't have experience in, she, I'm sorry.
She's found an awful lot of things.
Okay, but there's also-
Infects a lot of things. I'm not saying we give her unlimited amount of time. We have five months, we have five weeks. Do we have a letter from Gaybridge that says what they need us to start sending them in the mid of August? I'm sure the first thing they're not going to ask for is bank reconciliations.
It's one of the first.
There's a list, I have a list from two years ago.
It's one of the first.
Right, but they're still going to collect other stuff.
Okay. I, I just, I just sincerely think that this is an expense that has been done in the past, and there were other expenses with another company that will be, that was much larger-
Right.
And did nothing for this township, besides make more mistakes.
Well, and if she's going to reconcile it the same way that Neil reconciled it, I don't support that.
No, that's not it. No. That's, no, that's what we're trying to get away from. Because that's what we have had to do to get, to get some of these months reconciled.
Can we have a moratorium on journal entry, general ledger entries made? And only run things through accounts payable, accounts receivable, or cash receiving?
As much as possible, yes, absolutely.
Because the two systems work so well together that you really don't have to do a journal entry, ever. And I'm seeing that, you know, there's a journal entry here, and then it's back out, and then it's in, and it's back out.
Yes.
And it just makes things more complicated. And another thing that I just learned the other day was that, you know how all the different items, no one taught me this, I just happened to come upon it, and I remembered that Bobby had showed it to me, but I didn't understand it at the time. But you take all the items that I, all the receipted in items for the pool account, and I combine them all together into one number. So then it matches the number on the bank, the bank, the bank statement, where that wasn't the case for you.
I, I understand that.
Right. But that's, that took you a lot of time to figure out what things added up to get to that deposit.
I know. And that's not even so much the problem. Part of the problem is old general ledger journal transactions that we don't know what to do with. Don't know-
So can we do the easy part and leave the, the hard stuff for her to say, okay?
We've done that. Through January, what did, what, what did I get through?
January's finalized, and all the rest are started, except for I can't see May on the list.
No, we did not start May because there was just too many other things that were still-
I'm not saying that we're going to be able to solve some of the big things, but we can get some of the small stuff done for, for cheap, cheaper than a hundred and eighty dollars.
Sure, I can do that. I can do the easy stuff. It's the getting it to that zero without saying, okay, so we're going to put so much money aside, this much, to get it to reconcile. And that's what we've been having to do. And that is what Neil did. And that's what we don't want. We want it to be reconciled to the penny for, so we can actually start a new year with our accounts reconciled. That would be, that is the main account that has our library, it has the DDA, it has every, the police, all of the money in there. And that account needs to be reconciled.
Agreed.
What, so where is this computer that, when she logs in from afar?
The one that I'm no longer going to be using. I'm going to go back to being a trustee.
Okay, I'm just, because I understand how that works to log in from afar, and it can't be used by anything, by anyone else. It's a, okay, I'm just-
We'll probably just reel it in my office.
Well, it can stay there. It can stay there. I'm just, my question is, what computer is it? And, and I'm getting stuck on this length of the commitment.
What I, I, I clarified with them is that this is not an ongoing thing.
Okay.
This is to get things up to date, and then-
So define things. Are they going to-
Pool accounts done, the contract's done?
Yeah. I can help get the transactions needed for the audit.
Okay. Rachel's, yeah, okay. And Rachel's working on it.
Yeah, there's going to be, we have to backdate things, and like the special assessments, clearing that out, doing all that stuff. Now, there might be an hour or two from them on that, to look it over, to make sure that we have everything kosher, because it's not supposed to go to the auditor to have that done. We're supposed to do that here.
Well, I, I feel like Lori does in that I think we have some really good people in our, on our team, who can get some of this work done less expensively. I don't disagree that the pool account needs special attention.
That's your-
I, I, the contract doesn't specify that. I would like it to say, I would like there to be- I would feel more comfortable with an end date.
Well, we had Neil has a, there will be time where we will need a CPA's advice.
I agree.
And that is what-
So this is not, there is no end date? Because to have a CPA available is to almost keep them on retainer.
No, no, no. No.
There's no retainer.
Okay. So this is just to reconcile the pool account, help you with the general journal entries?
Prepare for the audit.
An additional request can be added via an email addendum. Assist with maintaining the general ledger accounting. That sounds like more monthly work than a term-doubt contract to me.
Can I throw this out there? She's not a CPA. She's not a CPA. Not one of us are CPAs.
That's right, absolutely.
And, um, we will need CPA's advice. And, um, we, we managed for years without that. However, this township has changed dramatically, especially with the new sewers and all the new USDA. You know, I don't, I don't know how to put it that we, it's just like we have a lawyer that we contact if we need advice. This would be the same thing. You contact the CPA when you need advice as to how to handle it. I'm not saying open book.
Well, and, and I, I don't disagree with you. The, the legal contract is one year. So are we going to say this is one year? Are we going to say six months?
That's what I was going to say, six months.
And, and I'm going to, I'm, this is a sticking point for me. Additional requests can be added via an email addendum.
And who decides?
Is that open to everyone? Or is it something that should be discussed?
Like, I, I mean, if we say yes, we'll hire her to help us reconcile the pool account and get that, and then if we want her to do something else, then we come together as a board to discuss what we're going to have her do her net, wrap her work on next? Or if it's audit only stuff?
Yes, I was going to say, audit. Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I'm fine with it. All I'm saying is we definitely have to have this fore to get this ready for this audit. That's all I'm.
I don't think anybody's here is disagreeing with that. For me, it's the timeframe, and I would like some things nailed down a little more tightly.
How about you remove that additional request?
Or you can leave it on if it's brought before the board. But for now, why don't we take it off?
Let's take it off because this is a contract with them. So if anything more comes up, that's a contract then with the township board. Not a contract, you know what I'm saying?
Prepare monthly bank reconciliations. Do we want to specify which account? Or in case there are other accounts that turn, turn into problem children?
I want this to be strictly to get us up to date. And.
Absolutely.
And then.
Which is.
I, I clarified that with Laura and Dawn before the meeting. I said, is this ongoing? Or are we just going to do it to get us up to date? And that's my, my point.
This stuff has messed up this, so this won't be that bad to get fixed.
So again, are we talking about monthly bank reconciliations, all the accounts? Or we, is the focus?
The pool and whatever.
Whatever else.
Whatever that would affect that we can't figure out after. I wish this had been done two years ago.
So, and, and we're talking, the line item that we're going to use is a professional services under clerk and professional services under treasurer?
Well, it's both of, it's both.
Well, but there's nowhere in here that I'm included in any of this, but yet.
Well, I thought that you, you guys had done that in the budget. I, I'm, I'm sorry, Lori, I thought that was.
No one's talked to me, I didn't know anything about this, and if I'm supposed to help out with the audit? I haven't seen a letter from Plant, from, from Gaybridge.
This position is statutorily to make sure that general ledger is, and somebody whispered in somebody's ear that that better be being done.
Well, I've stated my concerns. I'm, I'm not comfortable, this seems like an open-ended contract. I'd like it to be nailed down.
In a special meeting then?
If necessary.
Well, it's got, it.
This doesn't have a timeframe in it.
Can we add that?
I don't know, Laura, the, the letter's written to you, you had the conversation with them.
You're right, I did, and, um, we can add a timeframe? Just make it.
Yeah, because, um, when, when is the audit due?
July 7th, 30th.
So it's.
Much before, much, prefer, much before that though.
But at the end of the audit, they'll be adjusting entries that will be required, so.
Oh, no, no, that's done, we, well, some. But I'm, I'm hoping that, um, we have most of those done in advance.
As they come in from the auditor?
No, we can, we can do, um, most of them ourselves.
Because the CPA will tell us what to debit and what to credit?
No, some of it I, um, I had learned and, and done before. Then that's not just being a trustee again.
No, you want to be a trustee again.
Um.
Go on.
I'm not comfortable with this going on for longer than six months. I think if we do it for six months, and then we can re.
I agree.
Readdress this, and even six months seems.
I think three months, actually.
Well, I would be more comfortable with three.
I think three months.
So we don't need her, we don't need her printing and photocopying stuff for our audit, I mean.
No.
No.
Oh, no, no.
Not at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, no way.
At all, no. No, that's definitely.
John?
We'll try in three months. Wait, you know, you can hear November first.
Yes, well, I.
So, so cool. Does anybody have a calendar?
I mean, October, it could be three months.
So, November two, November first.
I was going to say, yeah, given, because you don't know exactly when they'll be able to start on everything, so.
Right.
So how about three months after start of work?
it looks like we need to get back with Plant, Moran, and get this contract reworked.
You can go ahead and make the changes right on there, initial it. And if they don't initial, then they have to initial it as well.
So we'll take off the additional requests can be added via email, limited to three months from the date of the signed contract?
Or the date they start work?
Date they start work.
We have no idea when that is?
No.
At this point, usually not.
And she had any idea, like, how busy her schedule was when she thought she could give us a hand? When you talked to her?
None, no, she didn't, but there's other people in the office that should be made. Melanie is her supervisor, she's a senior consultant, which would be part of the blended fee. And she's ready to jump in whenever needed, and we just, we're still in the beginning stages of this. I can't get a date from her until I know it's accepted.
Well, there's a motion on the table to accept this contract. Do we want to amend that? Or do you want to take a vote on it? Let's, um, we haven't voted on it, we can amend it.
I'm saying, yes.
Yeah. So, do you want to amend your motion, Laura?
To remove the request that can be added via an email addendum? Prepare monthly bank reconciliation for the pool account?
I, how about that's reworded to, um, get us up to date?
Which, which bullet point?
The first one.
So prepare monthly bank recs through 6/30/2025.
And then we need.
No, it's just a three month.
A three month contract.
From the date that they start work.
We kind of have to do it from date it's signed.
I think it's date it's signed, otherwise, yeah. Okay, so your motion is to make these changes to this contract? And, and enter into this agreement with Plant, Moran?
Yes.
And, so Laura made the motion, Sue supported. Any more conversation? We're going to add, make change the first bullet point to read, prepare monthly bank reconcili, prepare monthly bank reconciliations through June 30, 2025.
For the pool account.
For pool account.
Adjusting pool account?
Well, unless it causes issues that we can't figure out on the other ones.
So it'd be.
But I'm sure we can.
So what, what do we want the?
Pool account through June 30.
The second bullet point, assist with maintaining the general ledger accounting. Is that through June 30? Is that for the three months? Or is that in preparation for the audit?
So it'd be a June 30 end? She would have access to June 30 stuff?
Yeah.
And then in the new year, we could ask her questions? Contact her and say, hey, this came up?
Well, I don't, I'd have to see if they work that way.
Okay, okay.
Or do you want to take the maintaining out and have it read, assist with the general ledger accounting through June 30, 2025? I, I feel like we need a new contract, but.
Okay, well, we can.
I can get these changes made.
So third bullet point is annual year-end close of accounting records. Fourth, annual audit preparation and facilitation, and remove the final bullet point. And add a bullet point, three-month contract from date contract is signed.
Do we? Anytime I've closed a year, it's nothing major, it's a click-click. Because if she's maintaining the general ledger accounting, and when she's happy that that's good, then we can.
There's a lot of adjustments that are done after the year-end to the general ledger. So it's not just a click-click at the end of.
No, she's going to do this general ledger stuff. So general ledger would be those adjustments and those entries and things like that. So I'm thinking that these are the same thing. If you say annual year-end close of accounts, that's just closing the accounts of opening a fiscal year.
Yeah.
It, we really need her help on the general ledger.
So I guess I will make this out there. Do you want to have another special meeting? Get this ironed out, and then adopt it?
That would be my preference.
Yeah, and I'd like to be able to talk to her too, if.
Okay, so motion on the table, seconded. Let's put this to a vote.
I'll, you want to just remove your motion for now?
And just wait for the special meeting? Okay, I remove my motion.
Okay. So we will table the Plant, Moran for, um, change in the contract, and we will have a special meeting for that. Okay. USDA grant. Last week, I received an email from Jeff Lawson, uh, Sheboyden County Administrator. The USDA is working with the county. There may be a grant available through the USDA Emergency Watershed Protection Program Grant, whereby, um, the grant would provide 75%. It would be to clean up three areas on the Sturgeon River. The township must agree to participate in the cost. It's a 25% local match. The grant is not to open the river for commercial or private use. It is to help prevent a future flooding in the event of another 100-year storm. There, Jeff provided through Michigan State Police, um, three locations, the biggest of which is the south side of the Sturgeon is the Burt Lake State Park. The other two areas are off, um, Schultz Hill, you know, the big curve there on the Sturgeon where you go down, um. I'm sorry. Yes, down at the bottom of that hill, and then if you turn right onto, um, is that Will, Still Wilson? And then down there. But the big issue is, um, the question is, they don't really know the cost. There's a very preliminary estimate, um, of $35,000 to $40,000 contingent on a final bid. It would result in approximately $45,000 cost to the township. The question Jeff has for us is, would the township be interested in participating in the project if the grant is available? So that is the motion that I would make, is if, is the township interested in participating if the project is grant-eligible? Is there support for that motion?
Also. And again, just so everybody's clear, it's not going through and cleaning out the entire waterway. Correct, it's just preventative maintenance, essentially.
Yes, and, and what it would require is Burt Lake State Park area from the bridge out to Burt Lake seems to be accessible from the park. The other issue is where it involves trees having fallen in from the, uh, riverbank on private property. You know, they would have to get access from the private individuals. But yes, it is not to clear out the river for commercial river use or for personal river use. It is to prevent, um, future flooding and potential damage to what he calls municipal infrastructure or private structures. And there is a, um, yeah, June 16th, I think, was the date.
Have any of the private owners there attempted to, like the rest of us had to do with removing trees? Have they attempted to?
I can't, I don't know the answer to that.
I know a few people that have had to remove their own.
Right, and from the pictures that were provided, and these black and white pictures are difficult, you can see some arrows.
Yeah.
But again, it doesn't look to me like anything's been attempted, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, put it to vote. Does, is the board interested in having the township participating if the project is grant-eligible?
You have to, I'm sorry. You have to get permission from the property owners.
That would not be on us, it would be on whoever was going to undertake the, taking the trees out.
Would we have a say? As to how, how much? I mean, once the final bins come in?
Because we don't have this as a, there's, it's a preliminary estimate, so it could actually be more.
Exactly, it could be more.
This isn't a final say, this is just, uh.
Yeah.
Are we interested?
Are we interested in, the, what, what Jeff explained to me is, he said, if you're not interested, we'll remove these three sections from the map that will be submitted. That was the question, the question Laura asked was the question that I posed, is it could be more? And he said. That was the question. The question Laura asked was the question that I posed, is it could be more, and he said it could be more.
At that time, if it's fifteen thousand dollars that we're obligated, we can back out?
He didn't answer that.
That's what bothers me.
That's what bothers me too, yeah.
And that once we commit to this project, what if there's a project on the Pidgin or a project on somewhere else? Are they then gonna come with and ask us to pitch in on it too? Especially then other people have had to clear their own.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's the third area? You said Schultz and you said State Park. Where's the third area?
Down at the bottom of Fisher Woods.
By my house.
Yeah. Jeff did not have the exact parcel IDs. On the pictures from the Michigan State Police drone, I presume these are drawn pictures. It gives one address up on Vola Street and Wilson, and that's way up the hill, up Schultz Hill. That made no sense to me whatsoever. So he was supposed, he was going to be getting parcel IDs, which, on those final two, which we did not have as of today.
So when you said State Park, you're saying it's just the State Park area, it's not the other people on the other side of the state?
Well, it's hard to tell from this picture.
Yeah.
Because from the state bridge, that bank is so high.
Right.
There's not really.
Well, you know, I'm happy to share this picture. It appears. I can't.
You have to remember, there's paths where the ice used to dam up between the Wilsons and the lake.
Yeah.
And flood, it was terrible to try to get the ice jams free.
Right.
You remember that?
They would give it up. They would take, they would take.
Can you tell the directions?
So it can't be good to have something in the dumpster.
Can you put a "not to exceed" card?
It's not an option.
Well, I'll ask again, why the private property owners? Well, I would think most of the private, if you've been down the river on that side, most of the private property owners have seawalls all down there. It's the State Park side that's the problem. And there's not much of the State Park that is lowland and through there. There's snowshoes through there in the winter time. And Wilson's is high all the way down to where Anderson's Big Bear.
Right.
All that, there's just one very small area that is low.
Right.
But it still goes back to the fact where the trees, for private property, have fallen in. And. The people on the other side where they have their seawalls in. I've been found it, there's not been any trees from that side. It's the State Park side. That's what we can't, can't tell from the pictures. Yeah, and I don't know without seeing the pictures, but there's not very much of lowland there on the State Park side. And it really wouldn't affect the boat lines, even if it did flood anywhere.
Right.
Bottom right corner, it's got the thirty-nine twenty-eight Winona Avenue address. So I don't know if that's.
We tried.
And if you look at the left, it says Whit Boulevard slash Barbara Street. So if you pull it up on the GIS map.
Winona's on the.
If it's just stuff floating down, that's different.
It's supposed to be.
Helping to clear that up.
So I presume that to be on the Burt Lake State Park side, and that's what Jeff was able to confirm. It's the next two, which it says Sturgeon River Drive slash Fisher Woods Road. We're on the far left of that.
Yeah, when you get to the bottom of Fisher Woods, and then you hang a right, is that Sturgeon River Drive?
Could be.
And Mr. Allen lived in there, right?
That's all private in there, yeah. And then the last picture is Wilson Road slash Vola Drive. Well, that's, no, that's up hill, right.
We got the other side of Wilson.
Right. Right.
It's not a floodwatering going on there.
Right.
Is that what we're looking at, is that stuff that has fallen in and floating down that's causing the issues?
What he says is, it's these trees that have fallen, and I think this first picture, you can't see it, but this first picture shows it more clear.
Yeah.
Where the trees are laying in, in and over the river. And what he says, the county is willing to cover a portion of the match if township will also agree to participate in the cost. The grant is not to provide recreational access or clearing. The grant is to remove debris that could cause future flooding during a one-hundred-year storm event, resulting in damage to municipal infrastructure or private structures. Approval from property owners would also have to be obtained to access debris locations. The Michigan State Police blew aerials of a portion of the watershed within the township. The link to the MSP videos are below. And he's identified the following locations. At Burt Lake South, six, approximately sixteen trees partially in the river. Potential hazard to Barbara Street Bridge and debris in Burt Lake. Access possible from Burt Lake State Park parking area. At six fifty-five of the video, C seventeen and C eighteen, multiple trees over the river, possible access from private property.
Is the state checking in on this?
It's USDA. I don't think the state is. The county, yeah, no, it looks like the USDA and the county, but. Yeah, I mean, if I could say to him, it's, we'll, you know, limit it, but what about the people on other waterways that have had to clear up their own debris?
Yeah, I mean, look at Reed's cages, and I mean, everyone's, we've had to do our own, I mean, it's.
Yep.
That's, that's what we've been saying. This is from June ninth. I, I think most, a lot of this is already cleared up.
Yeah.
Next question. I've just, I recently tuned down that for that area. And there is a lot of trees that are falling into the river. The river itself, as far as areas that are passable, whether a tube or a kayak or inflatable boat, is limited and so forth. But I think the point here is not to favor one group over another as far as clearing their stuff. I think that what we're trying to do, what they're trying to do, is to prevent all of the things that have fallen into the river, some of which have been, they've used a chainsaw and cut it, so it's not really attached to anything anymore. It's just, it's just like log jams. And if we get, whenever we get a really high rainfall, then we have stuff floating down the river from these log jams. So what I think they're trying to say is, if we get a hundred-year flood, then a lot of that debris that normally just stays piled up in the, in the bends is gonna be dislodged and come down, and there are places where it could actually block the whole river, just like a beaver dam does. And if it blocks the river with the amount, you know, that's a fast-forward river in Michigan, and it carries a lot of water going through it. So it wouldn't take long for that to back up onto the land and destroy property and so forth. So I, I don't think, I mean, we clean up our area and stuff too, but when you think about the whole picture, if we, if the county is willing to help out, if we could say, yes, we would help out too, then basically, we're, we're taking away a risk of flooding where, when it is a possibility. So, I mean, they are, obviously, Big Bear goes up there a lot on their own accord, because of course they have a business, and they do clean it out to aid their, their guests and going down the river. Some of it does appear to be on private land that's come over, and some of it does appear to be on, I don't know what, you know, if it's state land or what. But is there an ordinance that says that somebody has to clear the river? I mean, do we need to exercise polite things to say, you gotta get your, clear the river if you've had trees fall into it? I mean, that's the whole question. Who needs to take responsibility for this? You know, it is a resource that we all use, but yet it's also a concern. We don't want to have a dam and then have all this, you know, water flowing over the lower parts of the river area. So that's, that's my take on it.
That's what I was wondering, if some of it wasn't from just floating down.
I mean, there are lots of areas along the Sturgeon that are not occupied, so I don't know who owns that land. I don't carry my phone along with me. So forth, but, you know, it's not really heavily populated until you get, you know, close to the bridges and stuff. And I haven't gone up any farther than Fisher Road, and I hear it's unpassable past above that. I mean, there are a lot of people who do like to tube, you know, from the First White Road, the Second White Road, or even from Wolverine. But this is not a recreational concern. This is a concern that this, these trees that have fallen or even been cut down and allowed to fall in the river may cause a flooding risk if they make a blockade.
Or if the water rises so high, it grabs the trees that aren't in the river that are on the bank.
Yes.
And sucks those in.
Exactly. We see that, I mean, we're, our, our home is down near the old Burt Lake Marina, so we, we occasionally see, like, full trees going down the, you know, down the river into the lake. And, but if you had a, a big flood, or a big, you know, hard, hard rain, and the water rose, it's gonna dislodge those branches and those trees that have piled up in those little corners.
Okay, well.
Can I put my BLPA hat on here? This is protecting the watershed. And I, I think it's important, I looked down on this, reading through this is, is protecting the watershed, and I think we need to. They're asking us if we're interested.
Right.
We're not making a commitment, we're just saying, yeah, we'd be interested and continuing to discuss it.
As long as that's what. Right. Depends if we have the money. Our portion of the town is dollars. I, I would feel more comfortable if the state was also partnering in on this, but I don't think they're going to.
I'm, I'm willing to amend, I, I'd like to amend my motion to say, is the board interested in having the township participate if the project is grant-eligible? We can limit the extent of our financial commitment. And at what point can the township disengage from this project? That would be my qualifiers on it.
I think it's a total amount, because I think that we have partners in this community, that maybe I'll let.
I know that, I know that.
So my motion has been amended to qualify that, are we interested in participating if the project is grant-eligible? We limit our costs to be determined at a future date based on the final bid price, which has not been established. And at what point can we disengage from this project? I can support that. Okay, and I can reach out to, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Last item, I'll get ahold of Jeff Lawson on those. Last item. We had an incident on Barbara Street whereby a pedestrian was struck by a truck. It was a hit-and-run. They were pretty banged up. I don't know the full extent of their injuries. They were sent to the hospital for x-rays. A police report was filed. The question came in, whether or not the township could do anything to help create an awareness by painting orange stripes across the road from Ken's Village Market to the gravelled associate parking lot across the street just beyond the gas station. I talked to Matt Hall at the Road Commission today. He said the township would have to send a request that we discussed it at the board meeting, that the township would like to know if a crosswalk is feasible. He would send his engineer down to take a look, and we could go from there. We can't just go and paint orange stripes on the road.
Because some customers park over there and walk over to stop too.
And again, what they're gonna look at is the best. Yeah, you know, but the best place for a crosswalk across there.
Yeah.
That's my question. My motion is, is the board in favor of me sending an email to the Road Commission saying, yes, we're interested in having your engineer come take a look and see if, if we can put a crosswalk there, and what the price, what it would entail and the cost. So that's my motion.
And I'll support that motion.
You see a crosswalk addition, with addition of that little sign that they're now putting up there that draws people's attention to the legal aspects of people in the crosswalks?
I, yeah, I don't know if that road's wide enough right there to, we would just like to see at least a crosswalk.
Yeah, at least a crosswalk, but.
Something.
I, I grew up, we, we lived for quite a while near a, a college, a university, and, you know, we are accustomed to students walking across roads without even looking up from their phones and so forth. And so, you know, we, we just automatically stop when anybody gets near a crosswalk, whereas, you know, I've been, you know, near missed a number of times just, you know, trying to cross with any crosswalks out
Right.
in town. And I, I've witnessed some really scary things with little kids and stuff, so. Making people aware that it is a law.
Yeah, 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 there's, yeah. Okay, so the motion is to send an email to the Road Commission, asking them to come and do a study and a survey and provide a cost estimate for a crosswalk there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And public comments?
My name is Jim Carter. I'm here representing the Indian River Masonic Lodge, past matrons, past patrons. And December of twenty-three, we submitted some paperwork to Doug Kuiper to ask for a property tax exemption. We submitted all the paperwork, all the documentation that was required. We are a 501(c)(10) nonprofit organization, and in that IRS ruling, it specifically mentions the Masons, in fact. Also, MCL two eleven dash seven, or point seven-one, provides for property tax exemptions for charitable institutions, which the Masons are. We provide free use of our facility for community events. Kid's sale was just down there in front of the lodge prior to the found, frontier, or the event we just had. We also are open for blood drives, et cetera, at no charge to any of the organizations. We provide bikes for books for grade schoolers. Most people don't realize that, that the schools themselves determine what grades, how many books the kids read, and who read the most books, they get a free bike. We are a member of the Indian River Chamber of Commerce. We also support the burn camp. And we also provide for driver's education for some, for disadvantaged use for who otherwise would not be able to afford to get driver's education for the license, driver's license. We submitted this paperwork, like I say, December twenty-third. We have not heard anything back, other than the initial comment from Doug was that everything looked fine. He sees no problem with it. I haven't heard whether or not we are actually tax, property tax exempt on our, on our location. So I would like to know if we can.
Do you have a phone number? I can call you tomorrow. I can look that up and call you tomorrow?
Yes. My phone number is six three oh, or three six oh, seven oh three, five seven, six four.
I'll look in the current tax year, and then he's working on twenty-sixteen. I'll look there too, to see if it's in transition.
Yeah.
If not, well.
Originally, from what I understand, a few years back, we were tax-exempt. That changed for some reason. I don't know what the whole story is behind that. Apparently, there were some disagreements or something between some individuals that caused us to be put back on the tax rolls, but we were tax-exempt before. So we're asking as a 501(c)(10) organization.
Got that, okay. And what's your last name, please?
Jim Carter.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Dan Spohn. To piggyback off your last agenda item and then what Deb said, and having several conversations with people in the community with the crosswalks in town, what would be the protocol with the state or whoever it would entail to reduce the speed limit on Main Street to 25? I think it's probably been brought up before, and because it's old US 27, the state has to be involved, but...
Correct, yeah, be a study done by the state, please.
Would, I mean, what would, would that require the township to put in a request?
I would assume the county. I don't know if a letter could be sent from the township to the county, the...
We have, we put in for studies in the past, it has to do with it being a state road, and, um, the minimum that they would do is 35. Can always try again, but...
Well, and, and there's stipulations out there with the number of ingress and egress in a half mile, per half mile distance. The fewer ingress and egress driveways, business driveways, you have the higher the speed limit. So there is always the risk that they would come and do a tra, and it requires a traffic study through the Michigan State Police. They come when they come, you know, lovely for them to come on July 4th or 5th. Typically, you know, if they come in February, we don't have that much traffic. There's always a chance it can go up, there's a chance it can go down. I don't think, um, 25 is as low as any road in Shwayton County can be posted.
Right, right.
I don't disagree that it should be lower, it is, we don't have to go that fast.
Right, and probably many people don't, I don't. I mean, I drive 25 and, because, you know, we're going to be talking about other hit-and-runs and things like that, because there, there have been a lot of close calls.
Yes, yes. And, um, I talked to Matt about that, because we've had other businesses on the Main Street who've said, geez, you know, we've got a, a crosswalk down here at the very north end, and then one not until, you know, Lake Street, and we've got a two, and then we've got, you know, Floyd Street. That was all taken into account when the streetscape was done. There was an engineering study in that, and the engineers decided through the study where those crosswalks would go, because the request was, gee, could we just get some more of those little orange, green things?
Unfortunately, there's people driving more than 35, everybody has seen that.
And knocking them over too.
Right, oh, right, right, right. One other quick question, maybe you know, maybe you don't. Whatever happened to the angel sculpture out in front of the library? Does anybody know?
The, the sculptor took it back.
Okay.
There is, we have, the township commissioned a few years ago. There is a new sculpture that should be coming late, late summer, early fall, and it will be put on the, um, the base that's out there. We hope to, he's working with, um, Kelsey to have some sort of a celebration there. He's a member of our indigenous, uh, community here out of Potaske, and they, the tribe in Potaske is very excited to partner with us.
That angel was beautiful, I just thought it was sitting in a garage somewhere, I put it in my car.
She's like, no you're not.
Any other public comment? Okay, public comment is... Oh, I'm sorry, Kim, I'm sorry, I'm bound and determined not to see you.
Kim Pearson? I just have a, um, couple of clarification. I didn't understand on the bills, um, 29 bills were paid. You didn't say what they were, but then you said there were 1,000 checks a month that you wrote. So that was a little confusing to me, if you want to pay Nick 29 bills and wrote 1,000 checks. I didn't understand that. And also, the culvert for Club Road, if that's not marked, would, if somebody fell into it or a snowmobile or something happened, would the township be liable?
That's a county road? I think, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. The culvert's under the road, you know, it's going to be...
Yeah, but I mean, if, if something went over it, like if there was, filled with snow and you couldn't see it? I mean, is it going to be marked?
I presume it is, I, I'll, I can ask Matt.
That isn't marked now, and I know last year it was difficult to see, if you were snowshoeing through there, cross-country skiing through there or something, or even if a snowmobile went by there, even if you're not supposed to, I mean, somebody could get hurt, and that would be...
Worth an ask, sure.
Liability. And then, I didn't understand about the boat launch, something about transferring the money, the 7, $7,200, is that like someone's salary?
It is for salary. Um, at the last meeting, we spoke about, um, because the parks have been paying for all of that, we are taking it from the parks, and whenever they work, say, at the cemeteries, the township's going to pay that, because that's our property.
So the $7,200 goes to a person or it goes to parks?
It's a budget amount, would they put in their hourly, if that's the max that we're expecting? This is a, um, new, this year?
Well, I was just asking for clarification, that's all, I'm, don't, don't upset.
No, I'm not upset.
Oh, I, I'm just asking for clarification, is, where does the money go? Is, is a person collecting it from working at the boat fee? It wasn't really clarified.
It's for maintenance, it's for cutting the grass.
Okay.
And doing that type of stuff.
Okay, so it goes in their, the parks?
They're trying to take all the wages that are in parks and spread them, because they're not just doing the parks, they're doing the boat launch, which is a separate entity, and then they're doing here.
Right.
So that we're spreading their, the salary expenses where they're actually working.
Okay, okay, all right. I agree, because it wasn't, I didn't understand that, so thank you for the clarification on that. Well, good. And I'm not against the Sturgeon River cleanup, I live on the Sturgeon River and I like it to be nice, but there's so many log jams on there that, no matter how much rain or whatever you get, it, eventually they go into Burt Lake, so be careful boating this summer. That's all I can say, take out your lower unit. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, wait. Okay. Public comments, opposed, board comments?
I just want to say how nice it is to have a meeting where people are allowed to speak up. It's like old, old-time meetings where...
Yeah, because that is really helping, what you said, thank you. Because I wasn't grasping a flood, like, these logs are going to cause a flood? I, I didn't understand, so when you explained it, I was like, okay, I got it, so thank you.
I love it, it is how meetings used to be held. Jane might remember that.
Any other board comments? Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine o'clock.